Okay, Valerie actually put together a draft overlay district for us, which looks very good, so she's gonna go over it for us tonight, so we have a good understanding and an opportunity to ask any questions.
Good evening.
It's all yours.
All right, good evening. So I thought we might wanna start off with the actual overlay district map, and we can start from there, and then I'll talk a little bit about some of the parameters that we highlighted, as well as where we're suggesting some changes in the zoning code, as well as the comprehensive plan to reflect the overlay district. So, we are proposing the overlay district to primarily still be within the IBLC district, but it also includes some properties in the LIO zoning district. It will start approximately around Turner Road, and it will split Route 32 from the residential to the commercial sections. It will follow your interstate along, well, it'll follow your interstate along Route 17, and it will also follow along the railroad tracks that are, that fall within the, behind Turner Road, and then go through Woodbury Commons area, behind Woodbury Commons area. It will also truncate along the actual village property lines. That way, we thought it was a nice clean separation, and then also because of the fact that you still have numerous commercial areas within that, within that property boundary between the highways and your property line, or the village boundary line. So, does anybody have any questions as to why we have identified this particular area for an overlay? I mean, one of the, a couple of the concerns of the directives that we were provided were that we wanted to make sure that the hotels do remain separated from the residential areas, and that when they are included in the business, commercial districts, that they're also included in more of the heavier commercial districts, and not necessarily your more local business type of commercial districts.
Yeah, I have one question.
Sure.
Can you just further clarify the northern border in terms of roads?
Yes, it's a little bit confusing on this map, because it doesn't really necessarily, but it's, it's, you see where Turner Road is, it's actually, it truncates along property boundaries, as opposed to a road itself.
Okay.
And so, we decided to follow the parcel lines, as opposed to a road.
You know where Printing Plus is?
Yes.
It kinda goes around, starts around that area.
That's the northernmost boundary?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, and then it goes south through the...
Yeah, all the way.
Yes.
So, nothing further north than that is included in the zone?
At this point in time.
Right, at this point in time, because, don't forget, there's other things we're gonna be allowing hotels to do. You know, height, they're gonna get a significant height increase and things like that, so we really wanna keep them out of the, the residential areas in the old part of Woodbury. This is kinda like the downtown or the business area of Woodbury, and that's kinda what we wanna capitalize on.
Right, and I think the other thing too, and that's, and that's a really good point, is that we were really focusing on what would you do for like, a limited mid-size hotel? So, it's not necessarily your small bed and breakfasts, this is really going to be more or less your like, Marriott's or your Holiday Inns type of hotels. So, if there's any, if there's not any more questions at this point on the map, I can go into the parameters, and then we can always go back to the map if you have, okay.
But, I just wanna point out one thing, so, we're including areas that are kinda already built out, like...
Yes.
Lock and Drive and stuff like that, Harriman Business Park, because, you know, we're not gonna prevent them, you know, if they decide, let's say, for example, and I'm not indicating that I know anything, I'm not saying like BJ's goes out of business, and a guy who buys it, or they decide to put a hotel there, they can, they would be in that overlay district.
And, the southernmost boundary?
The village.
Yes, the village boundary.
The village boundary, so it includes the train station, all of that area?
Yes, well, and it doesn't, it does not include your transit overlay district, so it's exactly...
So, that's separate?
Right, it follows, if you actually look at the larger map, you can see how it...
The Harriman.
Right.
Right.
But that one, that has its own zoning.
That, that's exactly what I...
Yes, and I will talk about that.
No problem. Hey, this is the place to ask the question.
Yes, absolutely. Okay. So, why don't I go into the proposed parameters that we're suggesting for the overlay district? First of all, the definition of hotels, we are proposing to change the definition of hotels from what you have existing currently, and that includes the definition that I provided in your memo, which is, "A facility offering rooms for lodging, accommodations for compensation to the general public, and wherein all rooms are connected to interior hallways, and thereby to interior elevators, lobbies, and/or stairways, through which access to the exterior is gained. Motels and motor courts are not included in this definition, and are prohibited in all zoning districts." So, one of the first things that we suggested doing was separating out hotels from motels, and because you're interested in the limited service type of hotel, like the Holiday Inns, the Marriott's, we suggested not including motels and motor courts at this point in time.
Well, are we defining motels and motor courts elsewhere?
We can do that, but because, well, we can, we can define those and include those in the zoning code, but at this point in time, once we remove, once we redefine hotels, and once we remove the hotel motel uses from your special permits, and it becomes an overlay district, you will no longer have motels as a permitted use within the village boundaries.
Right, but if it were me, and I were looking to put up a motel, I would, the first thing I would ask is, well, how is a motel different than a hotel?
Yes, so we can absolutely define that.
If we're going to exclude something, we need to define what it is that we're excluding.
I mean, it's kinda, president, the interior hallway...
Right, but we can provide a definition.
But that's what, that's what I'm asking, is a motel excluding interior hallways as part of its construction?
Yeah, typically, it's exterior access, yes.
And I'm just drawing that out, because, you know, it's not just the five of us at this table that, you know...
Absolutely.
I think that's a good point, we probably could define it.
Yes, we will define that, absolutely.
That's why there's no...
Exactly, you know, leave no ambiguity in the law.
Right. So, that then brings me to, in your zoning code, you have hotel uses permitted in three separate districts, the IB district, the LC district, as well as the transit overlay. However, the transit overlay already only permits hotels, currently. So, what we are suggesting is that the hotel definition, when we alter it, is not necessarily going to affect the transit district. Now, that's up to the, this board, if for some reason you wanted to allow for motels in there, and then we can make that minor adjustment, but at this point in time, the change to the hotel definition would also affect the transit district, which, again, already allows for hotels, it does not mention motels at all.
Fine with that.
Well, yeah, my understanding is the transit village, if they did anything, it will be a hotel.
Right.
Right.
That was my belief too, so that's why...
And now, it would have to fit this new definition.
Right, which is, which it would.
Right, that's what I, that's what I'm following.
So, there's no need to deal with them separately with respect to their definition of hotels?
No.
That's what I'm following. Thank you for clarifying.
All right, so, we're also suggesting to have accessory uses associated with the hotel. Currently, right now, in the IB district and the LC district, in your, the only accessory uses that you have listed for hotels or motels is with related dining, conference, and/or recreational facilities. But what we looked at, is we did a little research into what we're calling limited service hotels, and we are suggesting the following accessory uses would be permitted, which are restaurant bars, coffee shops, or cafeterias providing food and drink, lobby area and office, which must be provided for all hotels, meeting or conference rooms, banquet facilities, recreational areas for the exclusive use of hotel guests, such as tennis courts, children's playgrounds, or swimming pools, or other facilities approved by, and this is, you have one of two options, the village board of trustees, or it could also be the planning board. This allows for a little bit of flexibility, in case you do have a hotel that wants to have another types of accessory use that you, as a village, find important to include in that program, and that gives you the ability to do so.
Well, we've had this kind of issue come up before, with regard to turning over additional uses as permitted by either the planning board or the village board, and, you know, I'm not particularly comfortable with putting that on the planning board as a responsibility, simply because they would be determining differences or interpretations of code.
Right.
And, the creation of the code is the responsibility of this board, whereas the interpretation of whether or not something fits within a code, and should be given a variance, is the domain of the zoning board of appeals.
Right.
So, if we had to pick between planning board and village board, I would say village board.
Okay.
And that's my thinking on that.
Okay.
I don't disagree.
Beg your pardon?
I don't disagree.
And does this board find that the permitted uses are acceptable, and...
The accessory uses, yeah?
That's normal stuff that you find in hotels.
Yes.
You know, it's not like, there's nothing there that you wouldn't expect to find in a decent hotel.
Right.
Agreed.
Okay. So, then the ownership, this was something that was suggested, I think, originally by your legal counsel, that the entire property occupied by a hotel and related accessory usage shall be maintained in common ownership and control throughout the life of the development.
Meaning, the restaurant is owned by the hotel?
Yes.
As opposed to a separate licensee, similar to what we saw at the old Central Valley Golf Course back in the day, remember? They were trying to separate out that ownership, that kind of thing.
Right.
Is that traditional, is that what normally happens with hotels now?
I mean, to a larger extent, yes, hotels typically own the whole entire, you know, space, and they will lease out.
So, it's not reinventing the wheel?
Right, and I think it becomes a little bit more difficult when you start, you know, separating all those uses.
I agree, I just wanted to make sure we're in line with what currently is in the district standard.
And then, again, of course, you know, if for some reason down the line, you find that the market shifts one way or the other, that can always be...
Let me ask you this, so, I build the hotel, and I got like, 10,000 square feet on the ground floor, that I'm looking to turn into a restaurant or something, could I like, even though I own it, but could I like, lease it out to like, Applebee's?
Yes, yes.
Because some chains may wanna do that.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's, that would allow for that, I think the difference is if they try to sell that 10,000 square feet, and then you...
The actual ownership.
Right, 'cause then I'm sure that they would come in for, you wanna pine on that?
Yeah, generally, the courts have held that zoning cannot dictate the form of ownership, so it can't say, oh, we wanna have fee simple here, or we wanna have only joint tenancy, only condominium. The courts have held, that's not the business of zoning, it's outside the purview of zoning, so whether or not something is leased to somebody else, that they have leasehold interest rather than fee interest, that's something that's beyond the zoning court to go ahead and dictate.
Okay.
So, then we also wanted to provide some site planning standards, because, especially, and this will deal with both the site planning standards, as well as the bulk regulations, because the areas that we're identifying for the hotel overlay district are, to a larger extent, built out, and they tend to be, you know, for example, like the Woodbury Commons, you know, you have numerous commercial businesses within a particular property, we wanted to provide some flexibility to the potential hotel owner, mostly because of the fact that each one of these properties are unique in their own, in their own way. But we also wanted to provide a little bit of constraints on the, on the hotel, on the developer, so it's not just a complete, you know, free-for-all, so that this will at least have certain standards that would work with the village. So, we are still suggesting to have the site shall have frontage of at least 100 feet on a state or county highway. We are suggesting that the planning board is authorized to adopt conditions pertaining to the incorporation, maintenance, and a replacement of landscape material during the site development plan approval. We are also suggesting any parking or garage area, delivery or service yard, or active recreation area shall be screened as to adequately protect the view of neighboring properties, as well as to assure attractive environment within the site. And then, we're also saying that, suggesting that all screening shall be in accordance with the standards and requirements that you already have in your code, it's section 310-27. We're also proposing outdoor lighting shall be arranged and shielded, so as not to project beyond the boundaries of the property.
I have a question on our last bullet point, we already have in our code, something along those lines, but I think it further states something along the lines of 0.1 foot candles, not shielded, or something along those lines.
Okay, so...
In other words, we have a definition for light projecting beyond the boundaries of a property.
I don't know what it is.
We don't want it to be different for a hotel, right, so...
No, so we just...
We should use the same language.
I will definitely follow up with that, yes.
Or just reference the existing code.
We wanna protect the surrounding areas.
Oh, agreed, I'm just saying, we already have an existing code for that, so should we reference that, or use the same language?
So, I, well, that's the thing, so what I'll do is, I'll double check, and if, if it falls, or it can easily fall within this district, then I'll just reference that section.
I, I think that it's set forth in a specific section, I can't recall, but I know that historically, even before it was set forth, that the planning board has routinely used that standard for purposes.
Right.
Yeah.
You hear it over and over again with every application, so we should use the same standard?
Yes.
One question, I have about 100 feet?
Yes.
And I'm just kinda like, you know, how that plays out, so let's say, let's use the hotel, what is that, the courtyard down by Coles?
Oh, yeah, no, that's Hampton Inn.
Hampton Inn, thank you. Stay there, Jeff. No, but, now, they don't really have 100 feet of frontage on any road, really, they're in the back of a shopping center, so would that be handled differently, like if the commons was to put in a hotel? I mean, they, the, the shopping center itself has frontage on, on a state road.
Right.
Will that constitute frontage? I mean, I would think a shopping center should be treating, treated a little differently, or a business park, because usually, you drive into those developments, not a development, but like a shopping center, and there's roadways in there, so it's kinda like its own little...
Ring Road, that kind of thing.
Development, so on.
Right.
Are we gonna handle that differently?
Well, we can, then, if that is a concern, and if, for example, like the Woodbury Commons could potentially divide their property up to allow for just the hotel to own a certain section of the property, then, then you might wanna consider removing that, if you're comfortable enough that, no matter where, within this overlay district, somebody wants to put a hotel, that you...
No, that's not what I'm, I'm trying to say, I, I hear ya, and that's a good point, but I'm not interested, if the commons wants to cut out a piece of property for a hotel that they wanna sell, that's, that's their problem. What I'm saying is, if the commons wanted to put a hotel in, technically, they, the shopping center itself has frontage.
Yes, so then they would count, and if it's still of all the common ownership, then yes, that would count.
Okay, that's...
It would be, but if, for example, if the, Woodbury Commons wanted to cut out a section in the rear of its property for the hotel, and that, and actually sell the two acres to a hotel chain, and that hotel chain no longer has frontage, or that property, they wouldn't be able to do it.
Everybody good with that?
Not sure.
I'm not sure either.
I think that deserves further consideration, because we wouldn't wanna restrict the ability of a hotel to, to be erected.
Yeah, but the problem then, you have a shopping center like anyone, Harriman, Harriman Commons, Woodbury Center, or Woodbury Commons, you don't wanna have different owners in there, you, you want one neck to choke, if there's a problem, that's kinda how I look at it.
No, 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 I understand, but I'm thinking, for example, of the old Cabela's property, does that have 100 feet of road frontage?
Yeah, I believe it does. I'm not sure what they worked out, I haven't talked to them in a while, Rick probably knows more than I do, but I know there's some jockeying going on with the state, because of land swapping, and parking lots, and things like that, I really don't know where they are.
Well, that's what I'm concerned about, things like that, I mean, you know, we wouldn't wanna restrict, for example, a hotel conference center...
I agree.
...from going up on that property, whether it's the entire property, or a piece of the property.
But he, he owns, he owns the whole property.
It did have 100, I don't know how it's been divided up, since they've done the chess game up there, but...
Actually, the way that Cabela's, when Cabela's was going in, is that the whole, the frontage that they had, the frontage that they had was really related to village property, or the roadway, that was being deeded to them, contingent upon them going forward with their development. But there was a reverter clause in there that said, if they didn't go forward with it, then it went back to the village, that's still village property. So, my understanding is that, as Mike said, it's, it's really hard to tell now what they're going to end up with, is for that particular piece of property for frontage, because the state, it's been very fluid, as I understand it. At one point in time, the state was only taking so much property, then they were taking other property, then they were shifting and maybe trading some property, so I don't know how that particular piece is gonna end up with respect to the 100.
Even if we knew right now what the road frontage was, we don't know what it's going to be six months from now, because they may change their minds on something.
Another option you have is that, if you're concerned about, maybe 100 feet might be too large, and instead of just get, I mean, you know, you could analyze each property, but you could also just have a blanket that the site shall have frontage on a state or county highway, period. But then, that opens up to potentially, like, a small flag lot type of situation.
That's what the 100 feet was designed to avoid, is that you wouldn't have these flag lots, and, and you have one, actually, I mean, if you think about the Hampton Inn, right?
Yeah, exactly, that's what Mike brought up.
So, the, the question is, do you think that's a problem? Where you'd, you'd have these hotels in the back part of these lots that, that doesn't have it, or do you want them to have 100 feet?
I think we've identified one property that might be a problem, and we don't know, and I don't, I wouldn't wanna overly restrict it.
Well, the Cabela's property is perfect for a hotel.
That's my point.
So, I, it'd be a shame if we crafted this law in such a way that, that was eliminated.
That's why I brought it up.
Yeah.
Why don't we do this, why don't we have Valerie analyze all of the properties that are fronting on Route 32, and determine what are the frontages, what are the present frontage that each of those properties have? And then, that would help you determine what properties are at issue, and do we wanna reduce it overall for one property, or maybe, and maybe you do, or maybe you decide that since there's only one property, two properties, you're still fine with keeping the 100 foot, so...
Well, I, I can respond to that, and, and this is my feeling, I think the 100 foot is a good rule of thumb, however, the Cabela's property, I mean, I feel bad for this guy, if he gets kinda screwed by the state, lack of better terminology, but that's the way I'm gonna phrase it, I, I would think he should be giving a reprieve from us, being that it's a great location for a hotel, I don't know if there's a way we could do that, I would hate to see this, this parcel, you know, be eliminated from a hotel, but I, I really, I'm not sure if I wanna eliminate the 100 feet too. And, and as far as I'm concerned, there's a little piece of land there that belongs to the village, that's of no use to the village, and we always said that if it was a project that we supported, we would have no problem selling that piece of land to the developer.
Which is what you did with Cabela's.
Yeah, so, you know, I, that's something, I don't know if we can work in...
I think that, I really think it'd be helpful to all of you, if Valerie went ahead and did this survey.
Right.
We may not need to do anything else, we may be okay just the way we are, if that's the case.
We also extended the overlay district just to the end of Turner Road there, and we already had several applica, proposals before us for that property, and that road frontage became a problem, because it's...
Yeah, of course.
Right.
To have several parcels that are bisected by Turner Road, so, that, that would make me look at it.
Okay, I guess we should look at that.
And one more thing, Rick, you said it was 32, I think you said, Valerie?
Yes.
But, is, doesn't Cabela also, isn't it along 17 as well?
What we have, my recollection of how we have defined the frontage, at least previously in the definition, I can't recall it right now, as to yours, Valerie, but, we had done it, that it's frontage on something that can actually be accessed, we actually ran into a problem with, what was that property, it was tied up with the Harrimans, but they were, they had frontage technically on the flyover, right? But that's, we argued that that was not really frontage, because it wasn't useful frontage, you, you could never access that flyover property, to say that they, that constituted, you know, 'cause they had 10,000 feet of frontage, I forget what was the subdivision that was involved?
Yeah, George, George Jetson could.
So, we said that that, that didn't count as frontage, so I think what we're talking about is frontage that you can actually access on, 'cause that's the whole purpose of it.
And I'll check to see the zoning definition, if it has frontage in your zoning code, I can't recall.
I can't recall either.
And so, I'll check, 'cause if it doesn't, then we can define it.
So, you'll do two things, you'll identify all of the properties' road frontage currently that are in that corridor, and you'll also check that definition.
Yes.
So, that's good, so we'll get information, and we'll, and we'll have a further discussion on that.
Okay. Now, I just wanted to, as, as I'm working through this, let me, let me throw something else out there, 'cause technically, you know, if you want a, a nice access, right, 50 feet is, you know, is like, you know, your standard roadway, that type of thing, so, you know, that might be something else also, as we look at the different frontages to consider, 'cause you could, we could work in something that you have to have at least 50 feet, and then, within so many feet, it has to open up into a property as well, so that prevents like...
It'll be based on your analysis, so, we have options.
Okay.
But that's good, because I, I remember when I used to travel a lot, like, you'd go down to places like Dallas and stuff, there were hotels, you know, there were shopping centers, and there'd be a little road, you'd go in this road, and you'd drive a quarter mile, and this giant hotel there, so...
Yes.
I mean, it's different...
I've seen it in Virginia, I've seen it in Albany.
Yeah.
And, the other thing that you have to realize, there is, you are not allowed to make your zoning code sort of variance-proof, right? In fact, the whole basis for why zoning is actually allowable for a municipality to restrict personal property rights, is that, since you can't consider every conceivable possibility that will come up for how somebody wants to develop their property, you are required, if you have zoning, to have a zoning board of appeals to give relief. So, if you have 100 foot frontage, anybody's allowed to come in and say, under the variance test, to the ZBA, I wanna have 80 feet, or I wanna have 50 feet, and they will have to vary that, and that's, you're gonna have to live with that, so it's not necessarily that if somebody has 98 feet, that they're completely shut out, they would have to get a variance, and likely, if it's only two feet, they'd probably get a variance, if they only had 10 feet of frontage, it's probably unlikely they would get a variance.
Would that take into account, like the Hampton Inn, which is situated in the back of that property, but is almost like a flag lot, in a sense? I, I don't know where the frontage is, really, because it travels right next to Coles, and then...
Yeah, I don't remember where that property line is, do you for the hotel, the Hampton Inn?
No, I don't.
I don't know whether that's a lot that they have, so they access out over somebody else's.
Right.
Yeah, I don't think that's actually their property.
Right, so one of the questions asked, would, you know, would we like...
No, I don't know.
More properties like that, and the fact is, the fact that it's tucked away, I think's a plus...
Right.
Versus a negative.
And I'm...
That's really what you're, you're pointing there at.
I'm not sure I'd phrase it quite that way, we might wanna phrase it in that, do we wanna restrict people from having a property like that for our hotel?
I don't know what frontage is.
When it would be in the corridor, you know?
Well, when I, when I look at that hotel, I kinda see, I look at it in a, with the respect that 32 is the frontage, I kinda look at the whole shopping center, I don't just look at the hotel, I look at...
Oh, I agree with you, but, you know, Rick was just saying that, he, he's not even sure...
He's online.
Yeah, you know, are they giving a right of way, or...
Yeah, I, I don't know whether they have a right of way, I'm not...
And how would that apply within this law?
I'd probably be surprised if they actually have fee frontage on Route 32, because it wasn't required back then, that they had to, so I think as long as they had access, can show access, but we'd have, we'd have to check that.
Right.
But the, the issue then would be, if you had that large shopping center, you simply couldn't subdivide it off if you didn't provide them with, with 100 feet.
Right.
Or, if you had a shopping center, you'd have to provide them with 100 feet someplace, so, if they could have access, the trouble is whether or not DOT would allow the highway permit for a new shopping center, if you had more than one entrance.
Right, and, there are other people, there are other interests involved with this type of construction, and, and, you know, if, another way of looking at this is that if we've identified this corridor, this section of the village, as desirable for hotels, and, and feasible for hotels, then maybe we don't need it at all. You know, I mean, if we, if we've identified all of these different properties, or examples in other municipalities, you know, whether they be near or far, that have hotels that are fully functional and, and desirable within those locations, that clearly don't have 100 foot of frontage, or may not have 100 foot of frontage, maybe we don't need it, you know, I, I...
I think it's gonna be easier for you to tell if Valerie comes up with that survey,
Right.
I think it's gonna be easier for you to tell if Valerie comes up with that survey and probably a map that shows.
Right.
Right. And we go back to that again.
Right, the company said, yes.
So let's, let's, I think, okay, we could waste a lot of time on this, probably already have, so let's let's see what Valerie comes up with and then we'll determine it from there.
Yes, we can do that. Um, all right, so the bulk regulations, we're suggesting a minimum lot of two acres, and again, this was one, uh, the minimum where it does take into consideration your limited service hotels. Um, we actually have a hotels group in our company, and so I double checked with them on the acreage, and they said, yes, absolutely. They would be able to, like, Holiday Inn, or would easily be able to fall within the two acres.
What what kind of size?
So so typically is a hundred and fifty to two, uh, a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty units?
On two acres.
Right, so typically, right, so they, um, sometimes, like, a lot of hotels will typically look for a two to three acre site. But a minimum lot clearly could be two acres, you might get more of a hundred and twenty unit building as opposed to a hundred and fifty unit building. But two acres is possible. Now, if you'd like, you know, to, um, that's the minimum lot area. You know, if you wanna set a higher minimum lot area, you're more than welcome to, um, but, you know, we were looking at, for example, about a hundred and twenty room unit on two acre lot. You know, when you get to three acres, you clearly have more than that.
Valerie, when you did this analysis, did you do this analysis just generally based upon what hotels would normally do with respect to parking, et cetera, because they would need parking facilities?
Yes, that's correct.
Or did you do it in a connection with the villagers' code and the parking requirements of the villagers' code? That if you had the a hundred and fifty room hotel, how much would that allow your parking, or that's gonna be another analysis as to how, how do we adjust the parking?
Right, we're. We're suggesting, we're suggesting to change the parking.
Right.
Um, so that's the the two acre minimum. We're also suggesting that a hotel, uh, that um, there shall not be more than one hotel unit for each seven hundred square feet of site area. And doing that, um, will allow for a hundred and twenty-four room hotel on a two acre lot, or a hundred and eighty-six unit on a three acre lot. And again, that would fit within that type of, that prototype that you're, that you're looking for.
Well, let me ask you this, I mean, have you looked at some hotels that, you know, kinda fit that bill, you know, on like a two acre lot?
Yes, yes.
So, it's not unheard of where like, you know, you'd have Marriott coming, oh, we can never do that on two acres, but they could.
Yes. And but you would have a smaller Marriott.
Right.
Right, but I was just walking down the, in the New York City the other day, and there's, there's some really small Marriott's on the small properties there, so yes, they can, they can accommodate depending on. Now, I mean, again, if if the board would like a hu- a larger acreage, that's fine, but what I think is the market's gonna sort of, you know.
The safety.
Right, you know, I think, to some extent, if you say three acres, then you're sort of cutting off maybe a hotel chain that's looking to put like a hundred units in.
Right.
Maybe seventy-five units, and they're just looking for a smaller site.
I think two acres is a good starting point, you know.
You know, I think, um, you don't necessarily wanna do something too large, because then you're really cutting out opportunities for the hotels. So we're also proposing to do five stories and sixty feet, and again, most limited hotels, uh, are between four and five stories. So anything smaller than that, you typically won't start getting the type of hotels that you're looking for.
Well, I'm curious, and and this has come up in a different zone, but I'm curious as to whether or not that's inclusive or exclusive of rooftop equipment.
Right, so we do have, we do have to mention that, that's in, that's in the next section.
Bring it out, okay.
Um, but but I can talk a little bit about that.
Sure.
Um, the, the, but the five stories and sixty feet, we felt comfortable identifying the additional height um than you do now currently in your code because of the fact that we are really concentrating the hotels in a particular area, and it's, again, the more commercial area of the village, it's separated from the more residential area. So we felt that this area could potentially, um, have that particular height. Um, also, the topography allows for that to some extent.
Oh, I fully agree with that, and I and I also agree with the height exceptions that you have listed.
Yes, so we we are suggesting.
Just wanted to talk.
Right, it's okay, but I'll I'll talk about that now. We are suggesting, um, height limitations would not apply to rooftop bulkheads, elevator penthouses, cooling towers, or air conditioning, or heating equipment, provided that such features shall not occupy more than ten percent of the roof area of the building and are set back from the edge at least one foot for each one foot by which it's, it's complicated, but basically what they're saying is that it's the.
One foot away from the edge of the roof.
Right, exactly, if it goes up five, right, exactly.
Yeah, no, and I thought that language was great the first time I saw that.
Um, so it does, it does sort of recess it, it does provide some of the screening, and it also does limit the amount of rooftops. You don't get necessarily somebody trying to, um, put something as a rooftop, you know. And it's really, you know, they're calling it a bulkhead or something, and it's like a penthouse, you know.
Right, right, exactly.
It sort of limits that.
Or recreation.
But it does allow for a little bit, right, but it does allow for a little bit of flexibility.
Good, thank you.
Um, we're also suggesting with the maximum lot coverage a hundred percent. And that was really mostly because I was looking at, you know, Woodbury Commons, for example. If they were to build a hotel within their existing shopping center, it is gonna be a hundred percent coverage to a larger extent with whatever they ultimately, um, define as their property lines, or, um, to some extent we just felt, uh, you know, especially if you're dealing with smaller properties, um, we wanted to allow for the coverage. And that was the other thing I wanted to talk to you about, because coverage can sometimes be building coverage, or it could be impervious coverage. I was sort of looking at this as like impervious coverage. Um, but I can, and I'll and I'll define, make sure that that's more clear.
On the rooftop.
Yes.
I don't think this has ever come, come up in Woodbury, but it has come up in some other jurisdictions that I've dealt with, um, with commercial buildings and, uh, commercial mixed with residential, where it is becoming more and more, um, desirable. I don't know whether or not this is a trend that is also with hotels of having rooftop amenities.
Yes.
That is having, you know, being able to have parties on rooftops and and things like that. So I think we need to discuss that and decide whether or not the board wants that. There are all sorts of issues with respect to noise and how it travels, if you're gonna have some activities on on these rooftops. It's very difficult to sort of say, well, yes, you can have wine and cheese, but you can't have, you know, beer or other things. And so it's it's very difficult to draw lines, is what I'm saying, as to what people have in their mind as to say, oh, yes, that's acceptable, and, oh, no, that's not acceptable. So it's a, it's a difficult area, but I think the board ought to address if they wanna prohibit or allow with restrictions some kind of social activities on these hotel rooftops.
I've only been, I've only, I've done a lot of business traveling in the past ten or fifteen years, and I've only been to one hotel in in memory that had that type of activity, and it was down in the, uh, uh, Clearwater Beach area. Uh, I don't think our, uh, uh, area is conducive to that type of design, and all of the other business hotels that I've stayed in, uh, or or hotels in general that I've stayed in have had indoor recreation. They had a pool, it's been down on the ground floor, next to the gym, around the corner from the business center kinda thing. Uh, whereas I've not seen or or thought it necessary to have rooftop recreation that you're describing, Rick, and I I think the the intent here and and would, what I'd like to see is, uh, rooftop, um, uses of of elevators and, you know, things of that, elevator equipment.
So you'd prohibit.
Right, I would agree. I would prohibit recreation activities on the roof.
Hotel fare, either rooftop or all the.
Okay, well, it's West Pointon, they're pretty unique.
Oh, we have beautiful, uh, mountains to look at.
Well, I I I, anyway, I.
So you're saying you'd like to see it?
I'm not sure about that. I'd like to think about it.
I'm just saying it could be an option.
Because I I could see passive, like, uh, recreation up there, like maybe.
Like a balcony kinda thing, not a pool necessarily.
Sunbathing or, I mean, I don't know about a pool, because the weight of a pool and and things like that.
That's an engineering problem, not a zoning problem.
Yeah, but I'm, I I could see, you know, what I what I saw on a show one time, uh, about a week ago, where a lot of buildings in Manhattan are actually growing vegetables.
Yeah.
On their roofs and using them in the restaurants, so. I I mean, I'm open to that, but I mean, I, like I said, you wouldn't want like, you know, a golf or baseball game or softball game up there, because, you know, I'm just saying, but some kinda things, you know, I don't know.
Well, I can, I can provide some possible language on rooftop amenities.
But maybe passive, you know, like, just, you know, like a lounge area up there where you could just sit and, like, in good weather, sit and relax and, you know.
A lot of the restrictions that I've seen on the rooftop is that, you know, you can't have amplified music.
Right.
And and other things like that to try to keep it lower key. But Valerie can come up with some suggestions with respect to uses loud or hidden, and then you can consider it further.
Yeah, absolutely.
They would still have to meet the height requirement.
They would still meet the height requirement, right.
Right. Right.
Yes.
Fall under the, the other explosion, so.
Right.
Good point, yeah.
You might have to sacrifice the five story.
And if that's what they wanna do, and it fits within our, uh, desire for the community, then I'm open to it.
Well, and it also might just be, in general, if we look at like amplified music or, you know, some of those other elements, we might just wanna just have just blanketed, like, no amplified music after a certain hour, you know, because whether it's on the rooftop or if they have an outdoor patio, you know, area, whether we're really gonna want, you're gonna want that.
Music might be.
Bar, you know, an outdoor bar upstairs or something like that, and let's keep in mind where this is too.
Yeah, but the music could travel at night, and music might be a little tough.
Right, so something like music, or we could even, you know, double, you know, so.
I mean, look at the reservoir.
Yeah, I hear it.
You know, we hear it loud and clear, and everybody, and it's, uh, three miles away.
And there's a residential community, you know, just in the north of where we're talking, so.
It's not three miles away.
If you walk like I do, sure.
What are you walking circles on?
I do.
As the crow flies, it's a lot less than three miles.
Well, so I can, well, we'll take a look, but maybe it's just sort of identifying some other nuisances that can occur from a hotel in general. I'm just limiting those. Um, so, with regards to setbacks, and then also just the overall building coverage, I think because each one of these lots are very unique to a larger extent, and they're already built out, I think we're suggesting providing as much, um, flexibility as possible. So the only thing that we're suggesting is that the buildings must be set back fifty feet from any state or county highway. The reason for that is that it just allows a little bit of, you know, so you're not, because I was looking at, for example, on Route thirty-two, whether to have the actual entrance of a five-story building right on thirty-two as opposed to having a little bit of a setback.
I think you gotta have a setback, especially on state roads and stuff, because you need plates to pull over.
I agree.
Um, but, other than that, we're not suggesting any particular setbacks for these, for these properties to allow for flexibility of the hotel, and then also for the, um, the planning board and the village board to determine what fits best for the community.
This, with respect to parking at hotels.
Yes.
This also comes up with other types of uses. There is sometimes preference for certain industries, drugstores are one, to have parking in front rather than rear, for instance.
Yes. Right.
I think it ought to be addressed with respect to hotels. First, to discuss what hotels generally as an industry'd like to have, and then second, what the board would like to see with respect to location and parking, reasonably, the building itself.
Right, so that's why we were suggesting to have no other requirements than a fifty-foot setback. Um, that way, it would allow for the the parking to be wherever that particular hotel chain would prefer. Um, if there is a concern from the board, we can, you know, clearly work some language into that. Um, we can also provide, if you wanna prevent from parking, you know, we're we're saying a fifty-foot, um, at least a fifty-foot setback. We can also make sure it's clear that it's exclusive of parking space, you know, and that it has to, um, you know, it's sort of a buffer. However, you know, you potentially could, uh, find a situation where somebody really finds that, you know, a particular hotel chain really feels that they need the, the, you know, that extra space, and that they wanna put parking there, so.
Now, we gotta, so, because you say a lot of hotels are pulling in the harbor, a canopy or something out front, where guests can pull in
Right.
undercover to unload their luggage.
Right.
Comes out further than the, uh, the building itself.
Right.
With the fifty-foot setback go.
Right, so we, you could, you could theoretically with a, with a setback, you could have a setback so that, you know, let's just say this is the property line, you could have that the parking area has to be fifty foot back, no matter what. You know, and then this is sort of like a buffer or your driveway entrance. Or some, or it's a fifty-foot setback for the building itself. And then theoretically, you could have parking
Right.
within that setback area. There's two different ways to approach that.
So the canopy could be in the setback per, uh, place.
Well, it's up to you, I mean.
Right.
That's what you're saying.
I think that makes sense, because if if you're fifty feet back, you know, the hi- idea is for cars to be able to pull in and unload. I would think we should allow them to have the canopy in at least, uh, twenty-five feet out, or something like that, you know.
Well, listen, when you have a setback area, one of the things you always have to address is, all right, that sounds great, it's gonna be setback so much, but what are you going to allow in the setback area, if anything?
Right.
It could be that if you want this, and you have some of this in some of your regulations.
Yeah, I know.
Where nothing can be put in the setback, except maybe, um, infrastructure, water, sewer lines, things like that. But if you say that you can have a can, you know, the entrance canopy in the setback, then it can literally go into the, the line of the property, unless you also define, it can be in a, within the fifty-foot setback, but not within a twenty-five-foot setback, as you were saying.
Yeah, I I mean, I I I don't wanna like, you know, restrict it where, you know, we're eliminating, uh, rooms, and we're eliminating convenience for the guest. I mean, I I want it to be able to work, I mean.
Right, I think, and I think some of the, some of the tricky part, you know, I was thinking about Woodbury Commons, for example, and I keep going back to that because it's already built out, so if you're gonna put a hotel there, there's really no
Right.
You know, like, so theoretically, the setback goes from, would be from the property line, which is, you know, hundreds and hundreds of feet. And so is there already, right, it's not gonna have a setback, so.
I'm sorry, excuse me, as as we're discussing this, I'm thinking of of similar areas in which there are hotels and and business parks and and all of that kinda stuff, whether it be Fishkill or down in Nanyuette, for example, with the Hampton Inn and the Hilton Garden Inn. You know, the hotels situate their buildings in such a way that the back of the building is up to the road. And there's, you know, road, road-facing windows from hotel rooms, and the entrance and the canopy and the covered area is on the other side, where you can't even see it, like it, like it points out toward Home Depot in Nanyuette, for example, or something like that. But they, the the designer of the property, the the, you know, the engineer and the architects, they situate the building on the property in such a way that it complies with the setback and gives a covered area to enter and exit the building and so on, so, you know. I I agree with you, Mike. I I I like the idea of keeping the setback free and clear, uh, but we also need to give the flexibility to the architects and the designers and the engineers to work within that restriction.
When you came up with the sort of industry standard of two acres for a hundred and twenty room hotel facilities, did that include any setbacks?
No, so it didn't really include, because each community is is slightly different, so it didn't really include setbacks. Of course, a lot of these hotels will, you know, adjust as needed. Um, but I think it was really thinking about where the building would go as opposed to whether we're gonna allow for parking or not, because of the fact that some of these areas, I think it's just gonna be, there's gonna be a hotel, and they're gonna have a little bit of landscaping, but it's gonna be in a big commercial area. You know, you have a few of them that are, you know, except for Route, except for some commercials, uh, hotels that might pop up along Route thirty-two, for the most part, you know, a lot of the other areas are already commercial, like mall, strip mall type of situations.
Most, most hotels like, you know, decent hotels, like the flags we'd wanna see in Woodbury, like, you know, Marriott and, uh, you know, Four Seasons and, I don't know.
The Four Seasons.
Well, whatever, but my point is, you know, they have an image to keep up too, so they're not gonna, you know, like, a lot of these hotels, they're gonna wanna canopy for their clients or customers coming in, because you know, if it's raining out, these people jumping out of their car and they gotta run in the door.
Right.
So, you know, they're gonna want some convenience like that, so I think we have to take that into consideration.
I mean, we purposely put in language to ta- and to discuss about the incorporation of, like, landscaping materials and stuff like that to allow for, you know, the planning boards to say, well, where where's your landscaping? You know, where we feel that you're just gonna, you know, if somebody proposes a hotel, and then all of a sudden they're planning to have parking all the way up to Route thirty-two, you know, that provides the planning boards some flexibility to say, well, wait a minute, we we wanna see some nice landscaping up front and then put it in the parking slightly, you know, off of thirty-two. Now, we could, if, if really, if if everyone agrees that Route thirty-two is the biggest concern with dealing with where the placement of a hotel or parking, or maybe landscaping, we could work in some language that says specifically on Route thirty-two that there has to be at least a ten-foot or, you know, fifteen-foot landscape buffer, you know, between Route thirty-two and the parking.
Thirty-two is, uh, the critical area, in my opinion, for setback for getting people off the road going to the hotel, because, you know, thirty-two is not that wide.
Right. Right.
Uh, and, so, I mean, you can't have, you know.
Cars stacked up.
Yeah, coming in there. We want a space where the cars can get off the road and pull in.
Yeah, I, I personally, I don't envision, uh, uh, the entrance where there'd be a canopy for loading and unloading right on thirty-two. I just can't picture it, because so many hotels I've been to, I, I mean, in Troy, Hilton Garden Inn, the back of the hotel's right up against the main street, and the canopied area where you would pull in and, and exit your vehicle and drag your bags out and such, is on the parking lot side.
I realize that that may be a result, not so much as a preferred design, as response to zoning co-interpretations.
And a result, and a response to the size of the lot and that kinda thing.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, that you're gonna have that here, too. I mean, they may want a canopy, but if the lot isn't large enough to go ahead and do it in one spot, maybe they'll adjust it.
Rotate the building, that's exactly what I was saying before, yeah.
And that's why we're sort of, we're sort of, that's why we're suggesting to have as much flexibility as possible, but we could, we could suggest, especially for Route thirty-two, instead of still keep the maximum, I mean, still keep the setback of the building at least fifty feet, right, from any state or highway, because that, and you can still allow, and that allows for like parking or whatever, even canopies if they wanna put that into the setback. But we could suggest for Route thirty-two that there has to be like a ten-foot landscape buffer before any parking or loading or unloading begins. Or, you know, or fifteen feet, just to have that sort of slight buffer area that forces cars to have to go off the road as opposed to pulling on the side of the road.
Fifty feet, basically, from that wall to that wall, it's not really a long distance.
No, it's not.
Yeah.
And we're, and we're saying a minimum acreage of two acres, but if you wanna make sure that they don't put just parking within that fifty feet, we could, we could put like a small little landscape buffer requirement. Rick, I don't know if you have any thoughts?
Well, we definitely want it to look nice, so, I mean, you know.
Right.
We don't want.
And I see, well, we also wanted to look, uh, have some type of uniformity with, with the hotels. Let's say there are, say there were two or three along thirty-two. Um, of course, they wouldn't look the same, because they're different brands, but they should have some similarity in the buffer, so that way it looks, it looks, you know, uniform.
Uniform.
So why don't I, why don't I come back with a potential buffer, for landscape buffer for Route thirty-two, and I'll double check with some of the math to make sure that that would work within like the two acres.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so, parking. We are proposing one point five spaces per hotel unit plus parking requirements contained within section three, ten, forty, for all accessory uses. So, and I actually have three, ten, forty with me, which is, um, right now you have one per guest plus one per every two employees, per the largest shift. And our hotel, and this is, and you know, um, our hotel group actually works a lot in Florida, where there's, in a particular area where there's a lot of hotels. And so they're suggesting one point five spaces per hotel unit, just covers pretty much the employees and the hotel guests. And, uh, but they do suggest plus the parking requirements contained in within your normal code for any of the accessory uses. So if you're gonna have a restaurant associated with it, they would have to include, you know, parking for that.
Because they might get non-guests going to the restaurant.
Yes, especially in like the, for example, now, but when you're looking at, for example, like Woodbury Commons and stuff, you know, we could even work some language in to allow for flexibility that, um, where the parking can be provided elsewhere on site, you know.
They have to meet their own, their current parking, so if they build a hotel, they're gonna have to build another garage, because to make up for the parking they lost, because theoretically, they, their site plan, they have parking for their site plan now, right, Rick? So if they were to put a hotel in, they would have to add additional parking, which would most likely be a garage.
Which I think is part of their.
Right.
All right, so, well, that's what we're proposing right now.
So what are you proposing right now?
The one point five spaces per hotel unit, uh, plus whatever parking requirements are required for whatever accessory uses, which is primarily gonna be the restaurants, everything, and, or meetings or conference rooms or banquet facilities. And we also, I also just wanted to note that, you know, I do know you have a graphic consultant, so you might wanna potentially run this by them, or I'm more than happy to run this by them, just to see if there is, um, some sort of local adjustment that might need to be made on this, but.
Well, usually with that, usually if somebody, uh, puts an application in for a hotel, they would have to do all that anyways, so, I mean.
Right, yes, okay.
My concern is the banquet facility, uh, language, that the one point five might not handle that, and the hotel occupancy as well.
Right, so the one point five would just be for the hotel unit, plus whatever your zoning code already has for banquet facilities, so they would have to add in addition to that.
Thank you.
It's one point five for every guest, for every hotel.
Every hotel unit.
For every unit.
Plus, if you had a restaurant, then they'd have to add.
Right, whatever is required for the restaurant, yes.
Do we have parking requirements for a banquet?
I was just wondering that, too.
Um, I will double check on that.
I just don't, I think we do, simply because of the.
We have for, for restaurants, so I don't know if the, you know.
Right, um.
Yeah, but we, we, well, we have one currently, plus we had one, and I remember, again, back when you and I were on the ZBA, with the Central Valley Golf Course property, where they wanted to split that up, that was, that was part of that as well. And it was a previous decision from the eighties that we looked at, and so there's, I think there is something there.
All right, um, so a few others for supplementary regulations. We are suggesting that the guest sleeping rooms shall not contain any cooking facilities of any nature, and shall not be used as apartments or for non-transient tenants. Um, we're also suggesting units shall be, shall not contain more than two rooms, and shall, and shall not be connected by interior doors and groups of more than two. And then I, you know, and then also the height exceptions, which we already spoke about.
Would that be two rooms plus a bathroom, so it'll allow for a suite?
Yeah, so, well.
A bedroom and a sitting area plus a bathroom, or would that be considered?
Does a bedroom count as a room?
That's where I'm at.
Right, so we can, we can define that so that it's, you know, a room does not consider it a bathroom, and then that way you have potentially the bedroom, a living room, and a bathroom.
I have a question with regard to the cooking facilities, and I am not at all advocating for any language that would be inclusive of cooking facilities, but I've been in, you know, the higher-end hotels, uh, where many of them, they usually have suites, large suites, to, to, um, you know, bring in customers at a show, a trade show, that kinda thing. And I, if I recall, I think they do include some type of hot plate cooking facilities, that kinda thing, so what does your hotel group come up with with regard to that?
Well, I mean, that, this is, this is more of a, a local preference, if you would prefer. I mean, we can remove that and allow for cooking facilities.
I'm not sure I want to see that. I don't think I do, but I guess my question then is.
So you won't get a Spring, uh, Spring Hill Suites?
Right, and I don't think we'd really wanna see that.
Or Residence Inn, right, where they have the cooking facilities.
But I'm thinking like Hyatt's, they have, you know, suites up on the top floor with that kinda thing. Would that be restrictive to what we'd wanna see come into the community, if we put, if we kept that in there?
Most of the hotels I stayed in, they don't have hot plates, but they do have a coffee machine and.
Oh, absolutely. But I'm talking about the, you know, the, the one or two suites that are up on the top floor of, of the, the higher end.
I never get up there, so.
Uh, but I have been, and I, I've seen them in, you know, and maybe it's just in downtown cities, like Denver, for example, I've been in. And I've been in suites like that, where they have multiple rooms and these elaborate kitchen setups and that kinda thing. I'm just making sure that, that's, or, or maybe I'm just thinking of the longer, longer stay-type places.
Right, so those are the longer stay type of places, um, you know, that's the trade-off, and when you put something like that in there, you won't, so they get that type of hotel.
Okay, so then, let me just clarify my question. Cooking facilities that does not include a full-size refrigerator or a dishwasher, that would include.
Like hot plates.
Hot plate or electric cooking.
Right.
Whatever you call it, or.
Um, you know, we can, again, this is something that I believe you might have in your code, but.
Well, in our mother-daughter section, we have something like that.
Cooking facilities, but if you don't, I mean, we can define it, but then sometimes that gets.
I think the stove is the thing that makes the difference. And it has to be removed or, you know, re-permitted every year.
I mean, I think, I think the difficulty with cooking facilities, having dealt with this issue in a number of different, uh, localities, you know, you start putting definitions in, and then people start.
No, I don't want to. I, I, I.
Creating the halls around, it's a.
Let me just clar, let me just be clear. I agree with this language. I just wanna make sure that we're not going to be restrictive of, of a hotel coming and say, oh, well, they say no cooking facilities, we wanna have two suites with that, so we're not gonna do it.
Can you take a look at hotel chains and see what they offer? I mean, I don't know if you can do that.
I mean, yes, I mean, I think, well.
I don't think so, personally.
There are hotel chains, but, for example, like a Holiday Inn or Courtyard, they don't offer those types of facilities.
Right.
Um, that's not the, but Marriott owns a lot of different, or offers a lot of different types of suites and.
What about La Quinta? That was one of the, that came in. Do you know what they offer?
Uh, right off the, well, I would have to take a look at what they're actually proposing.
But I think there's a difference, Mike, and maybe Valerie can find this out, of what some of these may offer versus what some of these can do without.
Yes.
Yeah.
Some of them have some of these, but if they didn't have some, then it'd still come.
That's my question, exactly right. Thank you, Rick.
And I will clarify that this cooking facilities language is very common in a lot of hotels' codes.
That's all I need.
Yeah, the other thing, too, with the cooking facilities, it raises our liability of there being a fire or something like that. I just think, I've stayed at every kinda hotel, you know, I travel a lot. Um, it, it's a longer-stay hotel we're talking about, basically that have a stove more than a hot plate, um, and a refrigerator. I, I'm just saying, Mike, that's, the language here would prohibit that, and I would encourage that. I, I don't want a, a longer-stay type of situation, because it, it's just not gonna work for us, I think.
That's not the example I was, I was thinking of, in my mind. But, you know, Buddy raised a good question, where, and I'm sure I know the answer to this, but we're not talking about microwaves.
No.
Microwaves are pretty common in hotel rooms to warm up.
I mean, again, you know, I'm saying no, but if, if we don't define it, you know, can, can your building inspector interpret something one way or the other?
I would not, I would, I think we need to define it, not as sort of very specific definition, but typical ways that you define some things to give yourself flexibility is to say, you know, such as, for example, or similar to the following, either allowed or prohibited. And so you would be saying that cooking facilities such as ovens and full refrigerators, or things, things along these lines, would be prohibited, and even if it wasn't that specific thing, if it's similar to that, it'd also be prohibited, the way that codes are interpreted. But that wouldn't prohibit a hot plate, necessarily prohibit a microwave, and you could even say that microwaves are permissible, that kinda thing.
Uh, you know, the one thing, though, I mean, I'll just throw that out about hot plate.
The hot?
Well, yes, and, and a lot of times hotels typically don't have a hot, offer hot plates, so I would, I would just, I would probably want that in with the stove tops, but then microwaves, we would not.
Microwaves are pretty common.
Yeah. And a coffee machine, you know, a coffee.
Microwave, coffee machines, small refrigerator, done.
I don't, I never drink coffee in Rome. It was down in a restaurant.
Yes, yes.
I bring my own water, but.
I don't know when the last time that pot was washed or anything, I don't.
Curious. Moving on.
All right, so, moving on.
Moving on, thank you.
So, so with these different parameters, and I know that there's a few things that I need to go back, um, and I will re, what I'll do is, since it seems like there was a number of these items that we, that this board agreed upon, I'll keep those and I'll sort of more or less redline the, the first few sections, so that you can see the changes based upon, you know, this discussion.
I think it's good, I, I think it's good. I, we just had a couple of things we wanted to clarify.
Yeah, no, absolutely, and so that way you can see what changes are being proposed. Um, with the current code, to implement this overlay, this would require you removing hotel motels as special permit uses from the LC and IV zoning districts. Um, the parking ratios would need to be updated, and the definition of hotel would need to be amended. Other than that, I haven't really found anything within your zoning code, any additional changes that would be needed at this time.
Other than, I think we agreed that we would have to have a definition of a motel.
Yes, right.
I mean, why don't we have Valerie come up with that? I'm not sure that you need a definition of hotels to be saying, this is what, we're gonna describe something that we're not allowing, right? So, I think the typical thing is that you describe what you allow, and if it doesn't fit that, then it's not allowed. But why don't you come up with some definitions, and then we can decide whether or not we wanna define something that we're not allowing.
Sure. Um, so if this board were to continue moving forward with the overlay, uh, there would be, I wanted to touch upon the comprehensive plan consistency with the potential overlay zone. So I did review the comprehensive plan, and, you know, as you know, that, um, village law requires that land use regulations must be in accordance with the comprehensive plan. Um, and I must be consistent with your comprehensive plan. There was nothing within the comprehensive plan that I saw that specifically would, um, counter what you're proposing to do, or would be inconsistent with what you're proposing to do. However, it would, your position would be stronger if you were to amend your comprehensive plan in a couple of different sections where you explicitly identify the proposed changes that you're looking to undertake. And those, um, specific sections, I'm just suggesting to actually just include some minor revisions, which would be, uh, section five point one goals, five point two summary of existing conditions, and five point three recommendations. And that's in your, it's considered your commercial mixed-use area section of your comprehensive plan. And for the most part, the recommendations within this comprehensive, within the comprehensive plan don't really actually focus on the particular area that we're talking about, but generally speak to the types of intensity of uses. And so this proposed overlay would fit nicely into those intensity of uses that are identified, which are specifically, you know, you know, you're not necessarily putting them in your more Hamlet-type of centers, and that you're specifically identifying the more, um, intense uses in the more intense business district areas.
Well, we have to do that, so, because if we're gonna go forward with this, we wanna make this bill approved.
So, so we can, what I can do is provide, um, some edits next time we meet, specifically for those sections, but that is what I'm recommending, instead of creating a whole nother section, maybe just going in and adding a few, a paragraph here and there
That'd be great.
to sort of complement what's already there. Um, and then I'll work with, you know, clearly with council, if, if you feel that, you know, we just add a se, a separate section into that particular chapter, we can do that as well, but we can talk about that.
I, I agree very much with Valerie, that I don't think that there's anything in the comprehensive plan that's inconsistent with what you're proposing.
Right.
So, from a legal point of view, there is no need to go ahead and amend the comprehensive plan. Having said that, um, it's always better if a comprehensive plan is clarified to make it very explicit that not only you're not saying, well, it's not inconsistent, but now you are going to affirmatively make it consistent with the legal standard for what falls, as if you're proposing something that's inconsistent. You don't have to have something that's consistent with it, as silly as that sounds. But the, I, I think what Valerie is proposing is a prudent way to just make sure the comp plan is very clear that this is exactly what we want, and this is what we want.
Okay, sounds good. So, I mean, what I would like to do, once you make these changes, if you can get it to us, and, you know, a week, or maybe two weeks before we meet again, because so these gentlemen over here have a chance to review it, so when we sit down next time, you know, they'll be ready for any questions, so we might, we might be able to wrap it up next time.
Okay. Um, I just also wanted to, uh, make note on the secret process. What we are suggesting, based upon what we see so far, if we move forward with the overlay, is that we don't believe, while, while this does technically fall as a type-one action, because it is a zoning, um, it does affect the allowable uses within the zoning district affecting twenty-five or more acres, it does not, we don't think that ultimately at the end, is there gonna be a significant environmental impact, which is gonna require an environmental impact statement. We do believe that you will be able to take a hard look at all the environmental, um, issues or concerns through the, um, part one, part two, and part three EAF. And specifically, what we propose is doing an expanded part three, which is, once you identify the environmental topic areas that have a potential, um, impact, then you take a little bit harder look at each one of those areas, and that would include things like traffic, um, land use patterns, that type of thing, and that's what we call, we put it into what we call an expanded part three, which is basically a report that has any sort of additional studies that are required. that has any sort of additional studies that are required, like, for example, with traffic, and then, um, and then a larger explanation of each one of the areas that were identified as a potential impact and explain why or what is being mitigated, um, to avoid that potential impact.
And, and just to clarify that for those that haven't been out planning for.
Yes, sorry.
That deal with this on a regular basis, is that the seeker regs basically say that if there is at least one significant adverse environmental impact, you need to have a positive declaration, and there is a preference or a bias that if it's a type-one action and at least one significant adverse environmental impact, you should do an environmental impact statement. However, it's not categorical, which says, under the right circumstances, you don't have to do that for. Here, what Valerie is saying, and I agree with her, is that this is fairly focused. You're talking about, you know, one issue of hotels in a certain area of the town. You're not talking about adding residential uses or multifamily uses or other types of commercial uses in very large areas of the village that have lots of different impacts, so you may have to go through the EAFs. This is much more narrowly focused. And so what the courts have said, it actually isn't provided for specifically in the regulations. Both the courts have said is that you're allowed to have what has been called an expanded Part Three of the EAF. And basically what it is, is that you identify those types of environmental issues that need study. Same way you would in an EIS, except you don't go through that entire process. And so traffic, have some, some traffic study dealing with what impacts this would have on traffic. But we likely wouldn't do anything on, you know, sort of bugs and bunnies type of, you know, endangered species
Right.
because we're dealing with a pretty well-developed area along a major New York State arterial route. So, we would, Valerie would suggest, and we would discuss, what are those areas that there might be significant adverse environmental impacts? Valerie would help guide us with respect to the studies that would be necessary, have people do those studies, and then have the board go ahead and take a hard look at those studies, and then you could, the, the, at the end of reviewing those studies, you could then say, you know what, I still think there are environmental impacts that can't be mitigated. Now, we're gonna require an environmental impact statement. Or, you could say, well, now that we have those studies and suggested mitigations, we don't need to do that. With the mitigations, we can give it a negative declaration, though.
Yes.
Okay. So, when do you think, um, you could get this back to us?
Sure, with, so with timeframe, when did you meet next?
Uh, two weeks.
Two weeks, that's the.
Wanted it two weeks before.
Yeah, I was gonna say, how you gonna do that?
So.
Ready now?
So, you're gonna go out the door and come back in.
Yeah, probably September.
September thirteenth is the me next meeting after the next.
No, September twelfth.
Yeah, we moved. So long ago that we did.
So, um.
Yeah, but September twelfth, we're just having a quick meeting to pay bills because the election day is next day and, uh, uh, CBA has to use Firehouse and, you know.
So, do you have.
So, that would not be a good night.
Not be a good night.
Are, are we meeting on the twenty-seventh, even though we're having a special meeting with Monroe on the twenty-fourth?
That's a good point. Uh, we have a few, September's a bad month for us, but we may wanna squeeze this in to keep the process going. We may wanna have a work session, you know, and maybe we could, we could have that at the Firehouse, you know, just have a work session.
Right, so I, I, right, so why don't I plan to have something to you within two weeks? Because I would like to also be able to send it to Rick to, like, review and, um, prior to that time.
And when we get that, I, I'll talk to these guys and see when everybody's available for a work session, we'll have it at the Firehouse and, uh.
Are you going away at all in August?
August or September, I don't think it's, well, you're gonna have it the twenty-third of August unless they edit it. Then I wanted it for two weeks, so we're into September for that meeting.
Right.
So, September, I mean, Thursdays are usually not good nights. The one, the reason I didn't, was able to do it tonight is that in Tama Goshen, we're up, Town Attorney, they canceled their meeting for tonight. So, there are some Thursdays.
But if I give you, if I give you this within two weeks, then you'll have time to review it and then send it to them easily?
Yeah.
Okay.
I mean, Rick, right now, the way things look, we're probably gonna have to schedule a work session, okay? Because, uh, September's all screwed up for us because of the annexation with, uh, Hammond Business Park and all that. We gotta have a joint meeting with Monroe, so, I, I think to keep this moving along, I'll get a, a date where Valerie's available, you're available.
Not a Thursday, yeah.
Not, not a Thursday.
Third, some Thurs, the first and third Thursdays are fine.
Well, we could probably do it on the first Thursday, but the only thing is, we have some people that may wanna go to the Town Board meeting, so, well, maybe.
So, the, um.
All right, so, we'll just, we'll figure out a date for a special meeting.
Twentieth?
Right.
I mean, the twentieth is fine with me.
Uh, uh, it's zero, we're zeroing in on it.
Why is everybody zeroing in on the twentieth? Excuse me? What's the twentieth?
It's the third.
It's the third one and, and, and has least amount of conflicts potentially.
Right, right now, I'm, I'm fine with that.
All right, I'll have to check my handy dandy count. That'd be September. You're good? Rick, you're good on the twentieth?
He is.
Yes.
All right, tentatively, let's do the twentieth.
Seven o'clock?
Yeah. Well, we, if we wanna do earlier, it's okay with me, I can.
Yeah, we're just working with a, putting a stake in the ground.
Yeah.
Why don't we do six o'clock? Well, Buddy, Buddy's the, Buddy, can you get back at six, or six-thirty, or seven?
I can probably make my six.
You can? Okay. Why don't, why don't we shoot for six, then? If Buddy's running late, we'll wait.
Right.
And if he's, if he's on time.
Okay.
And so, and your, when's your next meeting? Because you'll have to set this as a special meeting and have it advertised.
Yeah.
Not, not, you don't need to publish it, per se, like, but you, Desiree will have to notify the paper.
Should work it out.
And you'll put on the website and.
And we have enough time to get that done.
Okay.
It's September twentieth, six P M. Yes, that would be at the Firehouse. What, what is S C H U R A all day? Is that a holiday, Jewish holiday?
I don't have that. On the twentieth.
Ashura?
No, I don't.
Which is an Arabic holiday.
Oh, Ashura?
Ashura.
Oh.
I'm sure I don't know.
Do I have to be somewhere?
No.
Uh, I'm looking it up.
What's on my calendar all day?
Well, that's, that's how holidays work, but.
Ashura.
I'm sure I don't know.
It's Indian.
That's not a Jewish holiday?
Not one I practice.
Right, I was gonna say, I think my, my kids are in school that day, so I know it's not a, I know it's not a major holiday.
It's a Muslim holiday.
Oh, Monday, Monday, August twentieth is, it's Eid al-Adad, which is the second of two Islamic holidays celebrated during the Wikipedia. Uh, it's in my calendar, I have no idea why, but.
It's funny, it's the first time I've ever seen it.
Right?
There you go.
I just noticed.
Different world.
Okay, I think we're done for the season.
All right.
Thank you.
Hands together and break? Good.
Break.